Wait, who's American here?
Me, I am.
Hey, who's on Clash? Yo, who's on Clash?
Meatball maids, meatball maids.
Be careful, I might have flipped.
They're shit cops, they're shit cops.
Aye, shit cops.
Like meatball maids, right? On the parking lot. Nah, but like there's a shit that way. Meatball maids.
I'm gonna me.
See, like the shit cops that people... No, like that's the... That's the... What's like, what's the... Isn't it building way over?
Yo, our guys? But it's not what it is. It looks like a fucking...
Ah, you're a meatball maids or something?
I think I got the coolest outfit in here, what do you say, sir? Oh my god, no way! No way! Oh.
Huh? Hey, yo, 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 yo! Without me!
I guess the dude can finish in two minutes. That's what we mean.
Do you have a less visual as well, or?
I don't know, uh, it's across the street, it's motel parking.
Oh, okay, fine.
Get him in, get him in, just out of here. I need to advertise my young glasses.
Yeah, like the entire fucking city's in here.
Why? Why not?
Look at where I'm sitting, man.
You won't do anything.
Why'd they say they can't... Why'd you say you can't get upgraded?
Look at my le... Look at my left hand, mate.
Can I get a hoo-ya? 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 Hoo-ya?
Why not, then, I don't play?
Wait, what, you're gonna go? The fuck? Ooh woo! Ooh woo! Ooh woo!
Alright, so you, like, you're fucking vashing your toothpaste on that thing?
Matthew, shut up!
Ooh! Ooh, rice dish!
We're just doing some last minute stuff on our side, uh, but while we wait for these last, like, sixty seconds or so, just thank you everybody for showing up, welcome to the town hall. We're gonna have this one in city, um...
Can I do drugs?
Please understand that this is a city meeting, so we will not tolerate any type of disturbances or discrepancies. If we hear or see anything that we think, or sorry, we deem is a disturbance, you will be taken care of immediately. But other than that, um, just bear with us for like the next sixty seconds or so, and then we will get this thing started. Thank you guys so much for all showing up, we appreciate you guys here. We'll be with you in one hot second.
Woo! Wait, so we got sixty seconds?
I heard it was more than that.
Round two.
We're trying to get a crack in.
What the?
There's a lot of dudes on that side of the fucking thing for Palm Hall, bro.
Did you let it hit them?
She's gonna fire you, she's gonna fire you. Yeah, you've been using the company tablet to watch.
Your GS says, I bet he won't body somebody in here.
No, 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 no.
They said you were gonna body someone.
It went from fucking newspaper to tablets, huh? Alright, oh, okay.
Yeah, they scrapping.
Those low-key kinda well-deserved things will last. Why the fuck does everyone gotta knock off my hat? Wait, is there a Vago in here? Oh my god! Is there a chatter?
Nah, nah, Chevy, don't worry, bro. I got you.
Uh-oh.
Just one single Vago.
Man, fuck Chevy, cuz. Fuck Chevy, cuz.
Chevy four, bro.
Hey Lieutenant Dan, go get him. Lieutenant Dan, go arrest him. Yeah, you see the bloods ain't in here 'cause they scared.
Jedi!
I just got done robbing them.
He's gonna get kicked out if he puts you. Wasn't even a blood, though.
Well, I didn't think there were bloods, there were people dressed up with blood.
Listen.
Yeah, yeah, dude, then honestly. I looked at everything, it's like, he was like, he was like, make sure you tell your gang, and I'm like...
Yeah.
He, he didn't even say our names, like, you would know our name, oh god, there's a Danny.
Hello, hello?
There's a Danny.
Yo, 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 I hear you.
Yo, 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 can everybody else hear me?
Yo!
Yeah, 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 we hear you, we hear you.
Solid, solid, okay, we're three minutes late, I apologize, I know I said sixty seconds, but, um, some stuff happened. So, just officially, thank you everybody, welcome to the town hall, um, we're gonna be short and sweet, we don't have, we're not here to lecture you guys whatsoever. Uh, this is genuinely just for you guys to talk to us about some stuff, share things among yourself, um, this is genuinely just for you guys, we are here to just listen and see what you guys have to say.
Alright, let me start.
Uh, if you have a question, concern, or wha... Whichever.
Who said that? Who said? Again, say me a test, bro.
They can't hear you at the back.
A lot can happen, a lot can happen in sixty seconds, man.
Okay, listen, I am so, so sorry, welcome everybody, uh, I know I said sixty seconds, it turned into three minutes, which is not four minutes, so I sincerely...
Talking about the interaction thing and how it...
Oh, alright, well, I mean, y'all are shout... Shouting, man, we can hear you up there.
Yeah, it's, it's quote-unquote, gay as fuck, so...
Yes, quote, AKA gay.
Yeah, I'm not saying that word.
Okay, so, um, again, this is genuinely just for you guys, we're not gonna lecture you guys about anything, um, just if you have something that you wanna express, just stand up for us, raise your hands, um, we'll call on you. You can, can you please shut up while we are talking for right now? If you have something you wanna express, just raise your hand, we'll call on you, we'll have you walk up here, and then we will, uh, let you, let, or let you say your piece, ask your questions, whichever you choose, um, and then again, just to enforce, we are not gonna tolerate any type of, uh, disturbance, so if we hear or see you being disruptive, we will take you out of the city hall, okay? And that just means maybe you'll get sent to jail, maybe you'll just be placed in a hospital, I don't know, whatever, but just please, we are here for you guys, we wanna listen to what you guys have to say, um, we want you guys to respect each other while we're here, so just please, hear everybody out, don't talk unless it's your turn, unless you're called on. And yeah, thank you guys so much for coming, and let's get this thing going.
Okay, as Zook said, put your hand up if you have a question. You can raise your hand, stand up, so we know. Um, Mark Bradley, you can come up to the front here for your question.
Yeah, she really did, I feel kinda special, I'm not gonna lie to you. Where do I stand, just right here?
Right there.
I know this guy.
Oh yeah, you know, Mark Bradley.
One show.
So yeah, as you heard a little bit ago, the sixty second...
Mark, can you shout?
Yep, 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 sorry about that. So as y'all heard, uh, the sixty second interaction is, uh, a little too long. I feel like depending on the stip... The stipulations of where the location is set place and set gang should be maybe lower, you know, because if you're in a gang, you know, sixty second interaction, that just, that takes way too long.
So our rebuttal to that is who determines what makes, what makes the situation good enough to lower the, the interaction time?
Because you're in a gang, I mean, if you're fighting another gang, the sixty second interaction really makes it difficult. You know, I feel like if you're in a gang, you're pretty much asking to get shot, you're asking to shoot at someone, you know what I'm saying? It's like, you're okay with that.
If that is the only thing that you're doing in a gang, then, you know what I'm saying, like, I get it, gangs are violent, you shoot, you kill, you rob, but do you not do other things besides that when you're in the gang, right? If you're gonna go to war with someone, shouldn't you do a little more than just shooting each other back and forth? Right, serious RP, don't you wanna have some type of storyline with that? Though, the reason we have the sixty second interaction, and yes, in some aspects, it is a little too long, depending on the situation, but the whole reason we have that sixty second interaction is so that you guys can continue to build that storyline with each other, right? Why are, why are y'all beefing, what exactly happened for y'all to make it to this point? You never know, because all you guys do, and I'm speaking very broadly, and I apologize, but all you guys do is just kill each other back and forth, which is why you guys think the interaction should be lowered. But, we just want you guys to build on that, instead of just, you know what I'm saying, pinging.
Here's my, here's my, here's my thought back on that one, okay, so, I understand that, but most of the storyline revolves around, hey, let's just sit around, talk to them a bit, you know, a little bit, call them a couple names, and then say, okay, sixty seconds, boom, 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 bam. We don't talk about things, we, we just call each other's names, that's, that's what we do.
This is a shouting war.
That's you guys, though, right? You guys are the ones creating the storyline, so you guys should be the one changing the storyline, instead of continuing to do the same thing. We can't change you guys' storylines for you, that is genuinely all up to you guys. If, if it, if you guys' storylines are like that, that's because you guys let it get to that, and you guys did not change it.
I'm trying to do walk downs on my ops.
Okay, that makes sense, I'm done.
Mark, see with your, um, see with your, like, warring thing and stuff, if you guys make, like, a gang war, and you guys make that between gangs in a ticket, you guys can have your own custom rules to it, the staff will look at, so you guys can do KOS on blocks, you guys can do no dying. So you guys can't, you, you, if you guys can't actually set that up, like, the sixty second rules to stop people from rolling up instantly on Dannys, fucking spraying them down the shit, and to bring some story into it, but if you guys get an approved rule to shorten that in a gang ticket, then you guys can move forward there. But it has to be approved.
Can I just add him? Can I add him to Mark's part real quick? Hey, hello?
Nigga, go ahead, go speak.
Alright, I'm be straight up, I'm a civ, I used to be a part of the cartel for a little bit, every single gang interaction I've had is literally people rolling up on us, they just shout at us, call us names, wait for the sec... Sixty seconds, and then just shoot. We try to start a little story, but everybody just straight up just calls each other names, say, you won't do shit, you won't do shit, within the meantime, they're just looking at the timer, second and changes minute, pop, shots are fired, that's, you know, I get what you're trying to do, but that sixty second interaction was a little, little crazy. Like, regardless, I understand the, I understand the meaning. Yeah, with the sixty, um, okay, but you get what I mean, like, I don't know, it's just kinda ridiculous to have to wait that, 'cause regardless, it's just gonna be the same thing in the end of the day.
No, but the thing is, the point is, is that you guys should be doing more than sixty seconds to RP. You guys are the reason that, like, gangs are the reasons, very broad statement, as Zook said, that the gang RP is not that good, because it was thirty seconds, you guys waited for the thirty second timer to go off, and then you guys shot, so now it's sixty seconds trying to enforce that you guys are adding more to your storylines, and creating more RP, and it's still obviously not happening.
Yeah, it's still not happening.
These gangs are the reason that you guys are just running and gunning at the sixty seconds, so if we change it to lower, it's still gonna be the same thing, you guys should be creating your own storylines.
I feel like that's, that's a situation that's gotta be handled by the gang leaders talking to their members, 'cause every single interaction I've had with gangs is really bad, I'm be honest. There's only a handful that are really good, and then there's majority that are just really bad, it's just shouting, literally, it's just a screaming contest. Like, at least that's more RP than some of the interactions I had.
Um, okay, next person with your hand up.
Cartel K.
Right here.
Uh, Ty?
I, I just have something to add to that, is for that sixty second interaction, I have a feeling that a lot of people don't like doing it, because for that full sixty seconds, somebody else just sets up, and whoever's making the interaction gets killed instantly. So it's like sixty seconds of RP that just disappears within the next five seconds, 'cause we can't remember that now, you know what I mean, so it's, it's not really helping our storyline.
It's expected at the end of the day, if somebody shows up to go to talk to you, that sixty second interaction, they already know off gate, okay, why are these guys staying around us and talking to us so much, if they know we've been fighting for a while?
Because, like, literally, like, if whoever has that sixty second interaction is always the first person to die, so nobody even knows what happened in that conversation, so it doesn't really help build our storyline.
I agree with that million percent. Why do gangs interact with each other at all, right? Like, based off of this, it seems like y'all don't even want to talk to each other, y'all just want to kill each other. You are people that wanna kill each other, it seems like, right? You guys, whenever we talk about the sixty second interaction, a common rebuttal is that, yo, we're in a gang, this is gang life, is that not true?
Yeah?
What all does gang life entail for you guys? I'm so sorry, Ty, I don't, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, you're good, you're good.
What all does gang life entail for you guys? That, I feel like that is, uh, the root here, what does gang life mean to you guys? Does it mean just wearing a flag and just killing people because you don't like them?
Pretty much.
Okay, so then that's the issue right there, then, that should not be what the gang life is here. Again, guys, we want serious RP, if you guys just wanna be in a gang just to kill someone, then you should not be RPing as a gang in this city, because that is not what we are wanting here. We want you guys to actually have reasons for doing things, reasons for killing each other, or even just more than killing each other, right? Whenever you guys make your applications for gangs, a common thing that you guys say is that we wanna change the gang RP, we're gonna do things differently, X, Y, Z, you guys say that, and then we allow the gang, and then you come in, and you do the exact same thing as everyone else.
It's not wrong.
Zook, I have one more thing to add, so like, for, for what, like, what you're saying, like, I, I personally, me, I, I want a fucking, like, background, I want, like, a storyline, but what, what I've seen in the past is as soon as you try to make a storyline, like, say that, that end of that, that story, that, like, you start beef with somebody, majority of the time, you're not gonna remember that. So it's like, i- it's hard to build a storyline, because...
He's saying in head, in head technically storyline.
No, I'm saying in city, set storyline.
In city, set the storyline, like, we push you guys because you guys are fucking running a drug or some shit, and we want that drug and blah blah, but... Most of the time, most of the interactions end with somebody being killed, and it's majority of the time, it's the person that had the conversation with somebody, so it's like, we can't remember our storyline. I feel like that's a big issue.
So why don't we try to make that one of our focuses, you know what I mean? Why don't the people that are in gangs, why don't we try to stop ending every interaction with a gunfight?
Okay.
Right? You don't have to, you guys don't have to end everything in a gunfight, you can end, you can, you can RP chopping someone's leg off, you can, you can kidnap somebody, you can interrogate them, you can do whatever you choose, but...
And even if, even if minimizing, like, minimizing full kills can also change a lot of things, too.
Yes, it can.
So if you don't full kill, you can keep a storyline going, um, end it off with, we were here, tell them we were here, we, this is what we want, you know, things like that, stop full killing so much.
Could, could we try to, like, put something in play for the person that starts the interaction, or is that like...
So, uh, some, we don't like, we don't like adding on rules, the last thing we wanna do is ma... Add more rules for people to read, we can try to talk to gangs about that more, um, in another meeting or so, but as far as, like, actually, like, making that, we'll talk about making that, we don't like making rules, but we will talk about possibly making that a rule. But for the time being, we will just kind of address it.
That's all I was asking for, is just like, talk, sit down with everybody and try to get, like, to an agreement, you know what I mean?
Or maybe, like I said, stop full, you know, stop, you know, cut off full kills. If it's gang versus gang, stop, uh, you know, the full kills. If it's accidental, then sure, but cut it off, that way you can really keep a story, for sure.
Alright, that's all I had.
Thank you so much, sir. Same here. Thank you so much, Mark.
Uh, Pat Ross, over there, that's my director.
Alright, um, so I was just wondering if you guys have, uh, talked about any of the rules in that gang meeting at all, or anything yet? We did, actually, um, so some of them are still being, uh, tabled, because we have to talk to other cities about how they're doing things, and we also do have to talk to the boss man himself, because, again, he has a thing about numbers. So, some of the things will not, or are still being discussed, while others, we did come to conclusions on, um, one of the things we came to a conclusion on was the guns out on your block, if you are on your block, then you can have your guns out, that is an actual goal, um, raising the number, the amount of members to fifteen, that is tabled, because we have to talk to, uh, the boss man and other cities. Having ten people, or sorry, having all of your members shoot on your block has to be tabled, because we have to talk to other cities and talk to our boss man about that one, um, while we're talking about gangs, uh, people on our team, on our team, um, if they are, if they do not have any powers, then they can join the gang life now. Uh, if you do, if you are in a gang, then you can, you can have a whitelisted job if you are in a gang, however, you cannot have a high position of status, so you cannot be a boss, you cannot be an assistant manager, whatever the fuck, you can only be a member, one. Two, you have to drop your colors, flag, whatever, you cannot bring any of your gang beef to your workplace, if you do, then we will strip you of your gang status, and we will strip you of your job, because that is how serious we want that to be. The interactions, we just, we did just kinda start off this whole meeting with the interactions, um... That is all that I am remembering as far as the meeting. Okay, if I think of something else, I'll raise my hand again. Solid, thank you.
Yeah, what about the gang cooldown time?
Lower, you guys want it that lowered?
Well, they're asking about it, but they don't wanna speak up.
Hell nah! So then, okay, can someone ask a question about the, the game, the cooldown time, what do you guys want with that? You guys want it to be lowered, highered? I mean, I feel like forty-five minutes would be better, personally. Instead of, I think it's an hour right now? Yeah, hour. Can I ask why? Because it's, it, 'cause if you're, if you're at real war, where you piss the fuck off at someone, you don't wanna just sit at your block for thirty minutes after you get back from the hospital, or after you get back from killing them, just sitting there waiting for your cooldown. So should, is that not on you to find other things to do while you are quote-unquote, really, you shouldn't be waiting on your cool ti... Cool downtime, right? If you are in war or whatever, and you get sent to the hospital, should that not be on you to kinda focus on other things? Even though, yes, you are at war, but like, just because you're at war, that doesn't mean that should be the only thing going on, right? You still have your drugs to run, you still have taxes from other people to pay, I imagine, right? Like, you still have other things going on besides your war. Okay, so if I go, uh, corner selling, my, and my, uh, cooldown ends, while I'm corner selling, I'm gonna get caught lacking right there, and I'm gonna lose all the shit I was corner selling. Then that is a hundred percent on you, right? Like, you are in a game, right? You understand the pro, uh, the stuff that comes with it, if you know that you're at war, then shouldn't that be on you to always be on your toes and always watch your back, and to be never caught lacking? Yeah, so that's the point, literally, like, if, if you're at a real war, like, not a, not a quote-unquote friendly one, then you're, you're not gonna be out doing anything other than that war, that's just how it is.
Not exactly, though. That just means you shouldn't.
This goes back to gang RP just being gunning and running.
What is the purpose of having so many members in your gang? If you can't trust them to have your back while you're out doing things? It's a fair point. I'm not, and we're not trying to shut you down, we're just trying to provide our reasons for why some things are the way that they are.
I have something to add for that cooldown timer. So like, whenever that cooldown is ticking, I feel like everybody, like, like, say we, like, are at the same place as somebody, we'll, we'll just, like, avoid it, instead of, like, actually, like, talking, because the cooldown is just for, like, the shooting part of it, and we can't, like, kill each other, and we can't have a bad interaction, right? But like, we just completely, like, go the other way, instead of, like, continuing the story, so like, I just feel, I mean, I don't know what to say, because like, it is on our, us, for not making the story better, but like, I feel like some people think that, like, we can't even, like, talk to each other if we have a cooldown going.
The problem is though as well, when you guys do go and talk to each other, like, there's so many times where you guys go out of character, and you're like, talking about all the shit stuff that just happened, and like complaining to each other, instead of actually, like, continuing the storyline, nothing is getting continued, you're literally just complaining at each other.
Can't we just all have fun? Join in, bro?
Oh, you wish.
Just have fun.
That's how it should be, having fun.
Jay?
Oh, they actually know my name, uh, yeah, I'm made with numbers on blocks.
I did just bring that up, um, that is something that we do have to ta... Table, because we have to talk to our boss man and other cities, uh, to see how they're doing stuff like, to see how they're handling it.
Yeah, just wanted to bring it up, 'cause it's like, trying to get a T count while you're on your block getting shot at, and also, like, people wanna be scared to come to your block, instead of just being, oh, this could be five.
No, that's for, um, majority of us are with you guys on that one, right? Home court advantage, if you're on your block, you should be feared more, in a sense, um, but again, some things are above our heads, that is one of them, plus we have to talk to other cities, you know what I mean, so...
Yeah, just wanted to bring it up, didn't hear it, got brought up before, my bad.
No, no worries.
Hmm, anyone else?
We can't move, I guess.
Okay, Mark?
Uh, so, I was notified about MLOs, custom houses. Would y'all have any idea when something like that would be added?
What do you mean? I mean, technically speaking, you can do it now, but it's going to cost a lot.
Depending on the house that you would want.
No, if it's an MLO, it's the same price, no matter what MLO it is, but if it's a stupid MLO that is super unrealistic, it will just get denied.
I think he means like, MLO as a house.
Yeah.
Yeah, like, getting my own custom-built house, the way I want it, the way it was designed, not the blueprints and just a random house, and then a custom MLO for the inside.
Inside custom ones, no, the only thing we could do along those lines is if you had an MLO that was made, there'd be an opening series that anybody could access, and then we would place an old house inside for you, which would just be one of those other interiors.
Right, okay.
But actual custom inside interiors, hmm, not anytime soon, just because the city mechanic is way busy on it and stuff at the moment.
Yeah, no, I'm sure, I just didn't know if y'all had, like, an estimate about, around about when y'all would be implementing something like that?
I'm not sure, I've, something like that would ever be implemented, because I think custom ones would take up way too much resources, considering it would only go to one person, and we'd have to completely change certain scripts just to allow for that, whereas letting a custom MLO in is fine, but then it's going to be an open interior that anybody can access. But obviously, you would own it, you could tell them to leave and all that stuff, but...
Yeah.
As for actual en... Slash enter, and then you go inside of a custom one, hmm, no plans for that as of yet.
Okay, oh, I just thought I'd bring that up.
Uh, Mike?
Oh, and all the Dannys, like, what can we do about them, sorry?
I mean, they are, Dannys are still people, like, they are annoying, but Dannys, at the end of the day, are still people.
They're annoying, but without them, we would have a city with no B in it, so we have to...
You guys were all Dannys once, too.
Wait, I have, I have an answer for his question.
We weren't running up and just randomly hitting people, that's a problem.
So, can, can I answer his question for him?
Uh-huh.
Instead of us screaming, oh my god, it's a fucking Danny, we could actually, like, help them, instead of just freaking the fuck out, because we see somebody with a bald head?
Yeah, nobody does, though, we just cuff him and then rob him.
Exactly, that's on us, though.
So then you're the biggest part of the issue.
Until you try to help them, and then all of a sudden they start whacking you for no reason.
So, okay, so let's talk about them whacking specifically, why are they whacking? Are they talking? 'Cause sometimes they don't have their mic set up, and so they start clicking, and in turn, they start punching you.
But they have the option to change their fit.
Yes, they do, but...
And they don't.
I'm just trying to, right, but some things we can help them with, and I'm not saying that we should just find a Danny and defend him and try to tell him about the city, no, but like, if you encounter someone who looks like they are pretty new to the city, try to help them sometimes.
Hmm, hmm, okay.
You, you've just got to think, though, we're, we're very high up on the list. Sorry, we're very high up on the list, aren't to get, if we want people in the city, if we want new people to come in, we have to deal with the Dannys, and a lot of these people, they see these big streamers on Twitch streaming, so they download 5M, the first name they see is our city. They fly in, having no idea what to do, it's like playing a new game to them, they're not, you said the cities, they truly have no idea what to do, so many people were at that point, and now here today, actually wanting to RP here, but it's just, we have to find the people who want to do that, and then get rid of the people who don't want to do that, and that's... An unfortunate thing that we just, we have to deal with.
Well, I would just, I would just think the simple factor of, they had the option to change their fit, they didn't change the fit, which means they probably didn't have any intent to stay.
But they don't know how, some of them don't know how to do that, though, they see the menu, if you're in U25M, that menu's scary, of the, how many options we have, is a lot. They try, maybe they try and save it, and they click X, because they don't know how to save the outfit, and then they don't know to even think about going to a clothing store, 'cause they're brand new to 5M, they don't know any of these base, the basic stuff that we all know, because we play in other cities, we have done for over a year, these people have no idea. And we have to be able to teach them, and if they're not here to learn, that, that's fair enough, they usually get dealt with very quickly, but when we see a Danny, all we can do is try and help out, if they're clearly not here to help out, don't have a mic on, not responding to slash me's, there's nothing we can do, but...
I get that, but that's the problem at the hospital, I understand it's a green zone, I understand you can't do that, understand the admins are there, day in and fucking day out, watching, but it's the moments that not, we shouldn't have to do a report every single time something like this happens, it's just not right.
But you should, because...
What would you want? What, what's your ideal situation? How would, i- if you were in our position, how would you deal with the Dannys who are, who are just there to mess around?
Honestly, I wouldn't really know, I wouldn't know where to start.
So, a lot of the times, there's. Oh my god, a lot of the times, there's like, maybe four or five admins in city and a hundred and eighty-seven people in city. So there's four or five people. Watching, like, hotspots, PDM, hospital, doing stuff like that, we're not in the backwoods, watching you getting beat up by a Danny. That's why we rely on you guys to make the reports, we rely on you to take clips and send things in, so we can do our job and handle them. But we're not gonna follow you around all day because you're scared of a Danny. Taking care of a million other Dannys. Helping them and all that, what's up?
I, I'm so sorry, unfortunately, we are not a whitelisted city, so we cannot prevent people who don't wanna RP from coming in, from flying in. That is why we all have to deal with Dannys, if we were whitelisted, obviously, we wouldn't have these. Issues to these degree, but since we are not, this is unfortunately one of the things that we do have to deal with. It sucks, it's annoying, it's in the ass, no one likes people who are not here for the same reasons that we are. But we are, we all are trying our best to maintain the situation as best as we can, and. The only things that we can ask you guys to do is to just report the things that you guys are saying happen, so that we can then take care of the situation. For you guys to make your, and everyone else's experiences more enjoyable.
Okay, and one last thing, it's probably a dumb question, uh, how much is yours worth, sir?
What was that one, sorry?
Do you have a white, you ha- y'all have a whitelisted server, yes?
We don't.
Oh, I was, I was informed by somebody, y'all had two different ones.
No, we have. One, two, three, four, five, six.
Six other cities.
We have seven cities, and then we have a red dead city, which is way. The RP over there is. Terrible, it's scary how well they RP over there, but again, that's red M, that's not by them. Now, there is plans eventually, whitelisted server, that's on BZ's checklist, but for the time being. We're just getting these cities, we finally have a developer who knows the what he's doing, he's getting everything set up. Preparing for something like a whitelist, it would start out as a soft whitelist, and then maybe down the line, one city, we will have a full whitelist system. But for now, we do not have one.
Um, so, I'm going to start picking people who have not talked yet. We're trying to get through to everyone, so if you've already talked, just unless it's actually urgent.
I just have one more question.
Okay.
Is there a way for us to see, like, like, say a Danny's punching, is there a way to see their ID or no? Is there a way that we could, like, go back to where it was like old city, where we actually, like, help you guys out more? By you being able to give you IDs if you guys can't get to us right away?
Listen, there's only one reason that was removed, because people in gunfights would use it every single time, constantly, in all the cities, that's the only reason it was removed. I love the feature, I think it was amazing, if you get run over, you could hold it, you'd see the idea of what's driving away, but in the nicest way possible. Having such a function like that, we, civilians can't be trusted.
Okay, people abused it, I get it.
It's such a shame, it really is a shame, because it's such a simple thing, I think every city should have it, but. The benefits of not having it outweigh the negatives, just because it was constant, it was constant issues with people holding that. Trying to find people, even putting in clips of people breaking rules, and then they break more rules than the other people by doing that in Z clip. So, maybe in the future, if we can get something like that back, but for now, we can't, because people can't, in a white, in a. Open server like this, it's just, it's possible.
Okay, I, I figured that's what happened.
Uh, Chevy?
Oh, yeah, so, it's maybe, uh, already happening, but after.
Can you shout?
My bad, is that better?
So much better, thank you.
Uh, after a server resets, this may already be happening, but can an admin be like near prospecting? Cause I feel like that's where a lot of unintentional or intentional RDM goes down. Or like non-sixty-second interaction.
What location? I'm sorry?
The prospecting area.
That's something we can look at.
It's where the, it's where the blueprint is, there's only one blue, one blueprint.
Every reset, there's always a gunfire that goes down for stupid reasons.
It's only because of the blueprint, if it wasn't for just being one blueprint, stuff like that wouldn't really happen. Which I wouldn't say changed that system, but definitely have someone else.
Thank you for letting us know that's a busy area.
Literally after every reset, you could see about five different gang members carrying their homies.
I had to put in two tickets earlier today about it, it was me and my guys, all of us together, and.
Hiding in bushes, though, like, way after reset, they beat everyone there, they was hiding in a bush, and when. When you start prospecting, they'll gun you down, run up and try and rob your body.
I will definitely be there at reset then.
Yeah, it's like the six, the seven PM central and the morning one.
Thank you, Chevy.
I go, please, I've been waiting.
No, Lucifer.
You called on me earlier, but then another guy started talking.
Oh, I'm sorry, man.
Um, so I, um, I was listening earlier when you said about gang members won't be allowed to hold high-level work positions. But then I had another conversation with someone else, and they're saying about the difference between a gang and a crew. Um, which I'd never heard of before, I thought if you were a, you know, if you're an announced gang, you were a gang. Cause you know, people have lost their positions because they're in a gang, but then another person has got their position or whatever, because they're in a crew. So, is there a plan to formally clarify that, or is there a, it's clarified already?
Okay, so, right now, we have two crews. That are for, like, robbing banks, robbing jewelry store, not doing anything gang-related. They're just a group of people that go together and are robbing the banks and jewelry stores.
Moving forward, when people, uh, make crews, we will do better to clarify that they are coming out as a crew and not as a gang. That is on us, and we do apologize for that one.
Oh yeah, that was, that was just, I just wanted clarity, cause I, I'd never thought of that even being a thing until, literally, ten minutes ago.
Uh, Mike?
So, I was just wondering about the, uh, houses, like. Cause earlier, a few months ago, I think like last month or so. I was wanting to purchase a house, like, with N-City money, like, not Monopoly or anything. And you guys said that there were no prices yet? Is there, like, an update on that or anything?
It, it's still the same at the moment, uh, we're not accepting that, um. When something happens, we'll announce it, but at the moment, we're only doing donation houses.
Alright, that's all I needed.
Oh, whoa, 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 whoa.
Alright, sorry for, uh, going up twice, I have a question from someone that emailed me that couldn't be here, let me just pull it back up real quick. Um, so, it's a blood member, he wants to know about, uh, owning more than one drug slash gun location.
Okay, yes, uh, you guys can, uh, run more than one drug block. However, if we see that you guys only stick to one, because the only reason that we made everyone choose one was because people just kept kinda going to one and not exploring the other ones. If we do see that trend again, then unfortunately, we will revert back to only, uh, only claiming, sorry, one.
Okay, I just thought of another thing, um, so, is there a reason that I can't, uh, have a PD cousin?
Yes, because you are a gang member.
But it's my cousin, it's not me.
Yep, I, that one. Seven times.
Yes, the chief of police is here, he can.
So, the reason that we haven't, we don't allow, uh, members in gangs to have cousins inside PD is, cause we've had issues in the past. Where, you know, they will use the information that they have in PD, say we're gathering, uh, information on somebody for a raid, they have leaked that information to them. Where it's, it's like, we can't trust, the other people have broken the trust in other people having cousins inside PD.
But can't you just send them if they leak that information?
People who are just crims having cousins in PD.
They, they do get sent, but this is quite literally been a thing since the start of the city, every single time we give the, a group a chance, the first person will usually be okay. Second people, third, will eventually lead to somebody doing something terrible that sets the PD back. We've had cases where people have been working cases on gangs for weeks, as in spending hours upon days. Making Microsoft Point, present, trying to do something towards a gang, and then it will get leaked just. For this, for no reason, like, hours of people's time wasted, and it happens every single time. I'm sure there's a lot of people who could pull off being in a gang and PD, but. Again, if we let one, we have to let all people, and it's, it's a very touchy thing.
Uh, Warren?
Is the, uh, sixth slot ever gonna disappear?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
The best thing you guys can do is get used to not putting your guns in your six.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, but no one does that.
No, lead by example, take it out of your six, stop putting it in there. I found it quite ironic that people complained about the sixth slot, yet the people that complained were the first ones that I found personally to have them in their sixth slot.
I mean, I got mine in my sixth slot, but like.
Um, anyone else? With their hand up? Oh, hello? Come over here so we can hear you.
To go off of the whole Danny at the hospital thing, like, could we maybe put, like, barricades or something up? So they can't just drive straight through and plow through everybody that just got picked up?
Can we get the old green zone thing back?
Yeah, it's barricades.
Another good point for, for the hospital is.
Turn down your SFX.
Those announcements we make, those go for you guys too, if you don't need medical, you need to leave, if you stay there any longer than you need to. It's one thing, right, if they just blatantly run to the front door as you're literally walking out.
Just turn it down. Tell them to quit.
It's literally the rules, no loitering at Green Zone, it's, it literally states it there, you should get your medical attention and leave.
I know, but like, literally, I'd like, some people get beat up just coming out of the bed, I was just thinking of ways to, like. Reduce the amount of times people are getting, like, murdered randomly.
I got robbed getting out of my bed the other day.
Plus, considering the alien issues, uh, Green Zone at Pill would probably help with that. Especially like if there's fucking exploding cars, like, who was before. You wouldn't die from that.
That's the only issue with the Green Zone, no matter what, it always gets abused by the wrong people, which who do, they do get dealt with for that, but. The problem still comes up, people use it without trying, because they know it's a safety haven for everybody.
It's not really in the middle of town anymore, though, either, on top of that, like, I know when it was Pillbox, like, a lot of people did that. Just cause it was so close to everything, you kinda have to travel for the hospital where it is now.
Even still, people, if they know a gang is trying to interact with them, for example, will get to the hospital no matter what, just because they know they're safe. They will, they won't be able to damage each other inside of there, they only get worse for us, that's more stuff for us to deal with.
For that, for that Green Zone, as, as an EMS, former EMS worker, it's very annoying for EMS workers too.
Yes.
It's a shame, cause in a perfect world, yes, it, it's something that we would like, but just from trying it in the past, it doesn't work.
It doesn't stop anything, you, you still get trapped under cars and shit.
I'm saying I'm against it, because it, it just allows the Dannys to beat you up without them killing you, and then they just constantly.
Yeah, it doesn't stop shit. It starts people just jumping off of fucking roofs and shit.
Fair enough, there's some situations where you, you come outside, you get run over, but ninety percent of the people asking for barriers like to hang out there. As in doctors, you shouldn't be outside anyway, you shouldn't be performing surgeries outside, I know it's hectic, there's so many people coming in and out. Even inside on that bed in the front right door, you should be putting them on there reviving, staying inside, waiting for people. Nobody should be on that little curb waiting constantly.
You're a blood?
Which is where everybody gets run over.
Oh, blood, cuz?
Anyone else? Oh, Mr. Bradley?
Yeah, I got one last.
Wait, Warren, did you ask about the sixth lot?
Yeah, they're getting rid of them.
What about the, uh, the hospital bill? I've, I've had, I've had a lot of people complain, a lot of new people that I'm trying to help out in the city, and they all tell me, okay. I'm broke, I don't have a phone, you know, I got robbed, I'm constantly dying and going to the hospitals, a thousand dollars every time. I mean, some of us, you know, we have money, right? But the other people that don't, whenever it comes to that hospital bill, it really, really, really kills people. And then you have to sit there and give out your own money.
Question for you, would you prefer, though, that be cheaper, and people fear for their lives less, because they don't really care? It's gonna cost them nothing, and that's not the new people, I mean, people in general, gang members will just kill each other for fun.
What about the Dannys that run us over constantly? I mean, it's still, uh, it's still a hospital bill, at the end of the day, that money adds up.
Though, that means the economy is slightly more in check than if it was super cheap, cause everybody would be rich no matter what, at least. It's annoying losing bits of money, getting set back. But it's slowing down the economy, crashing, which kills the city, as soon as people get money, they get bored, and then they leave. Not in any way we can prevent that, that's all we want to do, and. Having it at those prices, it's, it's a lot, it's annoying, having no money and having to pay that price, but.
Stop pushing me, bruh.
Uh, gang members, it's the only people who I see mainly asking for help to be reduced are gang members. And that's because when it was cheap. RP, that's just them using the city as a playground.
And actually, the hospital prices are on a scale now, whereas when the city first. Uh, hottest construction and we came back, it was a flat two thousand dollars, it's now on a scale. So when you are just healed by EMS, you're not full dead, it's five hundred dollars. When you go to the desk, it's a thousand dollars, and when you are full dead and healed by EMS, it's fifteen hundred, so it's actually not bad at all.
Okay, well, what I noticed is, is a lot of, early in the morning, especially like. You know, gangs, people trying to get things done before a lot of the other, you know, members might get in. And there is zero EMS, and being left stranded out in the middle of bumfuck nowhere is not my ideal morning. A lot of people don't bring bodies back, and we are forced to F eight, or else we will be out there for hours. And I just feel like maybe there should be more EMS in the more impossible.
You can always apply for EMS, but people that apply for EMS are in certain time zones, we can't. Force people in certain time zones to be on at that time, warnings are definitely quieter, but. Like, if we don't have people applying for EMS, we can't hire those people to work for EMS.
What about, okay, okay, what about a system? What about you add a new job where anybody can do it, right? But they have to be brought back to the hospital, where as long as you're in that job, or you're hired on for that position. You get paid for picking someone up and dropping them off at the hospital, right? Maybe just imply a new job where anybody can do it, that way they don't have to officially be EMS, yeah, door dash for people, exactly.
I thought EMS was taking volunteers, though, no?
We do.
So you could always volunteer. You could, or, and I'm not saying you directly, but people could volunteer for EMS and they could help out that way. Um, you could always take it upon yourself if you see someone dead, you can pick them up, send them to the hospital. I'm not saying that.
But people want money, that's the thing. The volunteering, if they don't get paid, they're not gonna do it.
I wanna step in with quick.
Can I add something to that real quick?
Wait, uh, as a EMS, we have implemented a part-time system where you can be a part-time. If you choose and you will get paid, have the money. But you're a part-time, so you can get paid.
Yeah, can I just add out something to what this guy said?
Put up your hand.
Okay.
Hey, wait, just super quick while we are just kinda talking on a turn. Guys, if you are not speaking, I am gonna ask if you could just kinda step to the side and or sit down. We just kinda wanna be sure who is speaking at times. So if you are not speaking and or you are not called on, please do, please do step to the side so that we can actually see who is speaking.
Go to the side, put your hand up, I will call your name.
That, that goes for the four gentlemen who are standing.
Jesus Murphy. Uh, Mr. Bradley, are you finished?
Oh yeah, I didn't know if I was still in the middle of the conversation, I was adding stuff.
Fuck up, pussy, don't talk to me, pussy.
Looking like Mr. Cleaner shit, ugly.
Our announcement.
We are just gonna anyway one more time.
That wasn't me, I was not saying shit.
No disturbances, if you guys are being disruptive, we will have you sent out.
Uh, I'm done.
Uh, Mr. Bulldozer?
Yo, yo, yo. So, I was dead at Cajun Square for three hours. Didn't have the fifteen K to pay. What do you guys suggest I should do? If I'm dead in three hours?
Regarding that, that if you, wait.
Around.
Doesn't it just put you into debt? If you do slash help?
No, it doesn't. You can't do it if you don't have fifteen K and that's the problem. Cause I was laying in, in three hours. And that's a waste of time.
I'm pretty sure it is supposed to put you into debt if you do not have the money, so we will look into that.
Even then though, when EMS is not in city for three hours, isn't fifteen K kinda rough?
Leave me alone, yeah.
No, because.
I just came here, you hit me, what's up with you?
It gets abused. We just had that conversation. Slash help gets abused.
My three hours is a bit much.
But otherwise, there's gang blocks with ten ambulances on it because it was just two hundred dollars before. So every gang was having a free-for-all friendly fight and there'd be ten ambulances there. Because it was only two hundred dollars. And then the same gang would complain, yeah.
But don't uh, don't ambulances spoof.
No.
Nope, no one there next to them.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Jack Morgan?
Yeah, it's more of a rebuttal to what I think Bradley said earlier about like having a job that pays people to pick people up and bring them to uh, to what's it called, to EMS. The, an issue I see with that is that what's stopping a Danny from just getting that job? Getting the markets where all the dead people are and just taking their shit? That's why I honestly think it's a bad idea and why volunteers are more of a thing because it's, it's less trouble for government itself and you know, bus tickets and shit to handle.
That's the problem, like we, we really can't have anything nice half the time just because everybody's gonna.
Oh, I know, I'm, yeah, it's, it's just like a.
It's like the worst.
I know, it's like, it's like the mentality of like a, like a, a glass of water that's like half empty and half full, you know? Ninety percent of people that are new have that half, have empty mentality. So it's, you know, you got, there's gotta be a lot of uh, rules to be set in place, just so we can like roleplay properly. And trust me, I've seen my fair share of those things and like ideas being tried, trying to be implemented and it's not working because people just fuck it up.
Sir, thank you for understanding. Uh, Mr. Psycho?
So what are uh, stashes and uh, whitelist stuff, yo?
Soon.
It's like you said, soon.
Sorry, uh, either s- I won't say tonight or tomorrow night, whenever Darkside gets back.
Alright.
He's been working on a new script, so we'll be able to add the gang stuff and then also businesses on, I can get any of the admins to create businesses and stuff for people in city.
I get off my gang one-on-one's back.
Yep.
Ty?
So, for the, for the volunteer stuff.
Can you, can you shout for us, Ty, please?
Oh fuck my bad.
Can you just step in the middle?
For, for the volunteer stuff for EMS, or is anybody allowed to do it? Because last time I was told that only PD was allowed to do it.
That's what I thought as well, no? That's something to consider. I think it's just PD.
I mean, I'm down to let anybody volunteer, cause in the day, volunteers should come from all factors. So that's something to discuss with Matthew.
Okay. PD can see all the same calls, so that's why they can just swap over to our radio and still have the PD job. They don't need the EMS job. I don't know how the, I mean, we can figure some shit out for the volunteers, but they wouldn't be able to really.
You guys can make a new role for volunteers.
We're looking through it, Ty, we're looking.
Okay.
Volunteers could also be as easy as if you see a dead person somewhere, just bring them back. That's also very helpful. Um, John, Baker?
Um, how would we go about uh, becoming volunteers? When that becomes a thing? Is that something that would, we would have to?
Talk to Matthew or High Command at the hospital.
It's already a thing.
But isn't that just for PD?
Yeah, Daniel, is it?
Yeah, when it becomes, yeah, what I said, John, ignore Daniel, who's dumb.
Okay.
Um, anyone else with their hand up?
Cause we spraying, we spraying that nigga.
He's? No?
Kill father.
No one? Becky's, Teddy?
Is everybody's questions?
Not just questions either, comments, concerns, things you guys think that we could be doing better, things you guys think, you guys could be doing better, things that you guys wanna see.
I have a question for Teddy.
Go on, shoot.
How do you get your hair so nice?
Um, it, it just happens naturally, Ty, you know?
Really blue.
That's how, yeah, I do, I do.
Rat semen.
No, he uses gorilla glue.
This has taken a turn?
Oh wait, actually on a serious note, is there a way, like, is there a place you can go to get food that like always has food?
Gotta work for it.
Prison? Okay.
I go to UU every time I fly into city. Yeah, I usually give my food away, cause I don't eat it all.
Oh Becky, so I can have some food?
Yeah.
Also, don't be afraid to go up north, there are some stores that commonly do get looked over, so if you don't see any food on the south side of the city, maybe.
Demo stole it.
Oh my fucking god, Demo!
But guys, it does seem like we are good, we don't have anything from our.
I got a question.
Step on over?
Um, about a MRPD, I know, I know you guys are in the process of like updating it and whatnot. Is there like a timeframe?
Thank you, Becky.
For MRPD to come back? Okay, okay. And then same with MDT?
Uh, MDT will be sooner. We'll send this Darkside back from
Gotcha.
This weekend. He'll be getting that locked out since it should be working since it works in the other cities, but obviously it's an issue here. Uh, the MLO thing, it's, it needs BZ to accept it to work and he's gone until the twenty eighth.
Fucking losers. Off my nuts.
Any more last minute things? Going once, going twice?
Sold, have a good day.
Alright.
That's it?
Yo, just for the last people who came in late, just on, just, just know that we did change a couple of things. If you have any questions or concerns, feel free to ask anybody, what did get changed? You don't let me do more rap on message, damn!
No, I need to make out with you.
Why am I so pale? Why am I so pale? Why am I so pale?
Yo, get me out of here, I don't wanna get punched.
Oh my god, headache, headache. Serious RP, everybody! Serious RP! If your RP isn't serious, you should not be here! Serious RP!
You got your car here? I, I don't.
Uh, 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 I like that, goddammit.
Thank you everybody for showing up. Sound hall is officially over, you guys are good to go. Thank you guys everybody, please get the fuck out. I will RDM all of you, I will pull out my combat machine gun and shoot all of you, please leave, have a good day.
Uh, I think, they messed up questions. Charlie.
What did I miss? I, I wasn't able to start the timer.
Neither, neither was I, I, I don't know. What, did anything like seriously get changed? Yeah, what did I miss?
I am.
Yeah.
What the fuck?
Marachaka, oh no. Um.
You been, mother jocka?
Marachaka been recycling center for fucking, fucking hours.
No, no, before that, before that, mother chaka.
Oh, I was in sac- uh, recycling center there too.
No, no, no.
But before that?
Before that, before that.
Oh, big vacation.
Big vacation?
Yo, 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 yo. Yo, 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 yo.
Good to see you back, mother chaka.
Good to see you, mother chaka. I don't found.
You don't know who I am, mother chaka. But I know who you are, mother chaka.
I know who you are.
Who is he?
You're the one that denied me for police.
Bitch.
Not your uncle, so. Yo, somebody uncuff me, somebody uncuff me. Somebody uncuff me. Yo, bodies are gonna start dropping, bodies are gonna start dropping!
Hello uncle?
No, who the fuck did that?